Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to announce the establishment of a quorum and call the May 27, 2025 work session business meeting to order. At this time, if you so choose, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Our next order of business is the fun of the evening and maybe why there's so many people out on a rainy night, which speaks highly of you, Dr. Montague Davis. And Dr. Montague Davis is here to take the oath of office for superintendent. And we'll do that now and then I'll do announcements later. So let's go ahead and do what we have. Judge Ben Hunter here to administer the oath. Ben is an alumni of Warren County High School.
Yeah.
Exciting. Thank you for joining us this evening. And I believe, Dr. Montague, her husband does.
He does.
You didn't bring the Bible?
I think I did.
Yeah, no, I forgot mine, so.
Perfect.
Give me a couple more. You got it?
What are you looking for?
I brought one, but.
A pen?
I was so prepared.
What are you for?
That's what you're for.
All right. So we're ready?
Yes, we are. More than ready.
Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. And repeat after me. I, Dr. Carol Montague Davis.
I, Dr. Carol Montague Davis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of said state.
Of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As superintendent of Warren County Schools.
As superintendent of Warren County Schools.
So help me God.
So help me God.
That's all the words I got.
I'm saving that on my wall to make sure I buy by. Oh, don't worry, we got it. I got it right here. You got this. You go ahead and stand up there for pictures, Dr. Montague Davis, and your husband.
Garrett.
Garrett. We'll get others later with the rest of us.
We got to just to note.
I know you want to do picture.
Picture first. Okay, let's get a picture first. Come on, Ben.
One like that, and then I'm going to fight your sisters. Don't worry.
Thank you.
Okay, now if there are any family members of Dr. Montague Davis?
Family members.
It goes back to the crowd.
Very for you.
Now, shouldn't we say proud family members?
I should be standing, shouldn't I?
Yeah, all right.
But I don't want to be.
Kristi.
Come on.
Get over here.
Can I see your credentials, Tilda?
Yeah. The guy in the black suit.
Is there anything you could create a couple for us here or some of y'all could come to their line?
Kayla, you get one.
There you go.
We good now?
That's much better, thank you. Look right here.
Want to photo bomb Connie?
Can I look here again?
All right.
All right. Thank you, Ben.
I would like to, um, you want to guide us on this to make sure we do it correctly? And it's good?
I think the notary.
Because he just said sign here.
I can sign it. I can do it.
I think they have a notary.
We do have a notary. Don't sign anything, so we know what we're doing.
We all want to do.
Yeah.
We could do two.
The pen?
Attention. Yeah. Yeah. How are you? I left you a text message and I called you last week. I forgot. I forgot my lipstick.
All with business now.
Yep. It's all no turning back.
Yeah, here we go. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge Hunter.
That was one of my students. Tells my age though.
It's the way we like to grow them, right, Dr. M.D.?
Right, like to grow them just like that.
And I would like to say right now, in listening to her oath, that she takes the constitutional powers and authorities invested in her seriously, because if you were at Warren County High School's graduation and the principal recommended that she accept all the graduates, and she paused, and before she allowed, accepted them, she gave a nice little spiel about, you know, their lives ahead of them. So I know from experience she takes this seriously.
Thank you.
And with a, sorry, that's why I had to go get the water. My main comment is, Dr. Montague Davis, her official role as superintendent began on June 2nd. Her interim contract runs out June 1st, and so she starts as our full-fledged, so she had to take the oath before she could become our superintendent. So next Monday, June 2nd, right here, we will have an official meet and greet. And since we've done that once before, we're going to add and celebrate her oath from 4 to 6 here. It'll be light refreshments. And we'd like everyone who already knows her to greet her and celebrate her.
Thank you.
You'll do end of year, all that stuff.
Yeah. Well, I just want to say, of course, you know, I usually do athletics, so I just want to say we had the, Warren County High had the athletic banquet last week in the nest, and it was a great celebration. We want to thank those people who decorated that the gym looked beautiful and all of the students. It was, as I announced before, it was a formal sneaker ball. So the students were all dressed in their finest attire, and they looked great, as are the coaches and everybody else. So just want to thank all of the parents and the students and everybody who participated in sports and athletics at Warren County Middle School as well as Warren County High School this year. We appreciate all that you've done, and we just look forward to next year and having a great season, great seasons next year as well. So thank you all for attending and for working with us this year.
Okay, well, I guess I'm the hospitality person, because that's what I normally do when you come, to greet each and every one of you.
Nice.
And I'm just glad to see that so many has come out this evening in all this rain. It's not like a drizzle, but it's just good to see each and every one of you here this evening.
I just want to say first, I want to just congratulate Dr. M.D. and, you know, and Warren County is on, is on, she's official, so we can't go anywhere but up.
There you go.
So just like the eagle soaring, we would definitely soar.
That's right.
And I just want to congratulate you and thank everyone for coming out tonight.
Yeah. I did owe what Joyce Long had said. I tell you, welcome home, Dr. Carol Montague Davis. We're very excited to have you to be a part of the governance team here, because we're not separate. We are a team together, and I'm excited. But I also wanted to say to the principals at the early college and the high school, you guys did an amazing job. Graduation was just exceptional. So kudos to each of you. So excited about what the high schools have done. They had great speakers. The atmosphere was just a really, really good feeling. It made us feel like we were eagles. I feel that spirit of an eagle coming back. And so I do, I do recognize that it's, it's a team effort, but I do recognize that Dr. Montague Davis, you're back. And so we're feeling that spirit again of an eagle. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I have one more thing real quickly. Just, our attorney has established a new precedent tonight. She has Bring Her Father to Work Night, and she brought her dad, who was visiting her, and I thought we'd say, welcome, Mr. Weinstein, right?
But the real reason she brought her dad to work with her is because today's her birthday. I said to her, why don't you get a substitute? He said, there's no substitute for his daughter. I appreciate that. Again, thank you so much for coming out this evening, board. Thank you so much for having the confidence in me and allowing me to serve as superintendent here in the, in the city, in the town, in the county, that made me who I am today. So I really do thank you so much for your confidence in me, and I know as a team of us working together, we can do nothing but great things, because we have great leadership in our buildings and we have great students here in Warren County. So I look so forward to this task and all of those things that I swear to I would do my best to uphold. So my, my comments this evening, this past weekend, Board Member Tally Brain talked a little bit about the graduation, but it was truly a special one for our district. This Friday and Saturday night, Saturday morning, we celebrated 127 seniors, both from both of our high schools, and that is amazing. And I just want to send my warm congratulations to all the graduates. Your hard work, your dedication, your perseverance has brought us to this significant milestone. We are incredibly proud of your achievements, and we look forward to seeing all the amazing things that you can accomplish in the future. And out of those 127 graduates, I only have the scholarship amount from the high school. Early College was still collecting theirs, but I do want to celebrate Warren County High School, because they had $2,479,710 of scholarship. So that just shows you that great things are really happening. And we have to celebrate those things. And, you know, testing is coming up for elementary and middle school, and last Friday, a couple of my executive cabinet, we spent the day, all the week, in Northside? And we did, we did some boot camp. And so I was so excited. I'm a high school teacher by train, and so I always say I'm a recovering high school math teacher and a recovering principal. So I was an elementary teacher, so I was not a recovering elementary teacher. I was a learning-on-the-spot elementary teacher. So I was in Ms. Walker's classroom doing boot camp math, and so I had such a great time and such an opportunity to work with the fourth graders. Some of my training skills came back. I can remember them saying, oh, eyes on me, oh, eyes on me. And they're going, what is that lady doing? And eventually, they got a handle to it. And I got so that I was teaching something, I wanted to take it to the high level, and Ms. Walker had to tell me, hey, you got to bring it back down, these are only fourth graders. So I had to remember. So just the things that the schools are doing to prepare our students, and the students are working so hard, but we have to remember that test score is just not defined what a child is. That's just a part that the state measures us in. So we just want the parents to tell them to do their very best, but it's no pressure, because people cannot work under pressure. So you leave them and you say, you have been taught what you need to do your very best for this test on that day. You get a good night's sleep, you rest, and you go in and say, I got this. So that's what we want to make sure that we let our kids know for that. And for the parents, just let them know that testing begins tomorrow, give them a good night's sleep, and let them eat a healthy breakfast. So I wanted to say a few things about that. We do have a community meeting on Tuesday, May 29th. I'm sorry, Thursday. Thursday, May 29th. Today's Tuesday. I slept all day yesterday, but on Thursday, May 29th, we have a community meeting, and it will be right here in this building. This is the new site of what our new elementary school is going to be. Please come out on Thursday from 6:00 to 7:30. You will get an opportunity to see the beginning drawing of what our school will look like, our new elementary school will look like. We want parents to come and float around and get the community to come and float around. You're going to have a few opportunities to be engaged in a couple of activities. So I want to make sure that everybody come, come out for that. And we have a middle school musical that's going to take place on Friday night, the 30th, and it's $7 at the door. We saw the concert last week from your band, and so they have a theater arts class, we'll have a musical celebration there. And our summer feeding program, just want to make sure everybody know that we will have a summer feeding program, will be kicking off with our schools in June. So those are just a few comments and that I had to share this evening. Back to you.
Okay, thank you. All right, now to get this thing rolling, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. I have a motion by Board Member Long and a second by Board Member Bird that we approve the agenda. If there's no further discussion, may we vote, as well as with the voting sound of aye. Aye, opposed nay. That motion carries. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. A motion by Board Member Tally Brain and a second by Board Member Long that we approve the consent agenda. There's no further discussion, may we vote, as well as with the voting sound of aye. Aye, opposed nay. That motion carries. Special recognitions, this, business partners, is that you?
That is correct. We're going to do business partners, but I'm going to ask Vice Chair Sims to help, help us out with this one. We have business partners here that, you know, you can't do anything without partnerships. So we are pushing and stressing that real big, undermining kind of like authority that they have given us, because I beg the community and the parents and all to be in partnership with education, so that we can make great things happen. So we have a few partnerships that we're going to recognize this afternoon, this evening, and when we call your name to come up. And what these business partners have done, we took on some things here at the central office that have done some things with the school. Like last week, we fed the, all of the seniors, and all of the board members were out serving, and so business partners helped us with that. Also, we have something called a Student Champion Council, and we meet once a month, and there were some partners, you know, the students like to come, because I tell them that we're going to have lunch. So lunch calls, and so we have to make sure, if you can see some of the pictures up here of my student council, there are some business partners that help us to provide lunch for our students on that time. So Vice Chair Sims, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Montague Davis. As she said, we've gone to the, to the community and asked various businesses if they would contribute, and I know she mentioned that we did all of the seniors. We did the end-of-year celebration at Early College, and then we did the graduation cookout at the Warren County High School. So we just appreciate all of the businesses who've helped us all year, and if we did not call on your business this year, and you are so inclined to donate to us, please contact either myself or Superintendent Davis, and we will happily put you on the list and come see you and get some money, because we appreciate that. They all read, Warren County Schools, Warren County Board of Education appreciates your exceptional partnership, steadfast support, and meaningful contributions to advancing our educational mission. Your collaboration has been instrumental in fostering innovation, expanding learning opportunities, and achieving shared academic goals. We value your commitment to education and look forward to a continued journey of growth and impactful collaboration. The first one is Hendrick's Insurance.
All right. Yay.
I know, and that's, as Chair Lehman says, we have a lot of alumni who's going to be coming up, so we do appreciate that as well.
Stay right there, because we don't have everybody shake hands.
Next, we have, and I'm going to, this, this young man is going to come up for both of these, Emancipation Proclamation Committee, Mr. Larry Jones, as well as R.H. Green Funeral.
All right. Thank you, Larry. Go, Larry. A double, boy. We like that. 2000. Watch those arms, Larry. So another woman.
Look right here.
I can take one at one time.
Thank you, thank you.
We'd like to thank Board and Warrshire Funeral Home, Mr. Stanley Jones.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Stanley. Thank you, Stanley.
Appreciate it.
A&amp;S Pest Control, Mr. Jonah Lawson.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Got it? Thank you.
Timeout bar. Is anybody here for, can represent? Timeout bar, Mr. Andre.
We'll take it down.
Okay. Okay.
I'll get a ginger ale one on there. You accept one. There you go. She's going to accept it for him. I don't have to take it down there.
Victoria?
Nice laugh. I was wondering if you could take him down to your.
I'm going to have this young man come accept both of them. We have Simply Sims Catering, which is my business, and Sam Sims Catering and Events, which is Tyrone Sims and Jennifer. Tyrone Junior is here to accept.
Tyrone Junior. Tyrone the teacher.
And he's one of our teachers at Marion Board Elementary.
Yeah, congratulations. He's one of my teachers. Oh, Tyrone, I put them together.
We have the Warren County Schools Alumni Association.
Anybody except Larry and us.
Yeah.
Crystal, come on, Crystal. Tyrone the teacher.
And he's one of our teachers at Marion Board Elementary.
Yeah, congratulations. He's one of my teachers. Oh, Tyrone, I put them together.
We have the Warren County Schools Alumni Association.
Anybody that steps Larry in the association. Crystal, come on, Crystal.
And last but certainly not least, G. Davis Production.
I get that too.
And so just the backstory, other, other than being Ms., uh, our superintendent's husband, he's a classmate of mine who graduated with the class of 83. So I call him a lot, and, uh, he's always there to support. So we appreciate all of them. Because I don't think I've called on any of these, uh, business partners who has not given. So we really appreciate it.
I'll get over here, you get right there. Just about anybody that's alumni.
Can we get any closer together? Even as wide as I am, I'm sure. There we go. All right, look right here. I gotcha.
Start here, shake hands, get behind her, and then go down the line.
Thank you.
Right here.
Appreciate you, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lawson. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Are you doing the special recognition of artists?
Heather's doing this one.
Heather's, oh, okay. Okay, next we have the special congressional recognition for Warren County High School student artists.
So is Peyton Terry with us?
Yes, she is.
If you will come on, and I tell you what, you'll stand right here.
And let's show your artwork first and foremost. While I tell you what is so special about this. So Congressman Don Davis awarded Warren County High School 10th grader Peyton Terry a certificate of special congressional recognition from the U.S. House of Representatives for her participation in the 2025 Congressional Art Competition. Her colorful artwork submission, titled "Where the Sky Meets the Sea", shows a peaceful beach scene with waves crashing on the beach at sunset. Was it sunset or sunrise? Sunset, nailed it. Um, at sunset, with birds flying in the sky. Each spring, the Congressional Institute sponsors a nationwide high school visual arts competition to recognize and encourage artistic cap- talent in the nation and in each congressional district. Since the artistic discovery competition began in 1982, more than 650,000 high school students have participated. Students submit entries to their representative's office, and panels of district artists select the winning entries. Winners are recognized both in their district and at an annual awards ceremony in Washington, DC. And the winning works are displayed for one year in the U.S. Capitol. So this is a really big deal. And I'm extremely proud of Peyton. And Peyton, do you want to tell our board members and audience just for a minute about kind of your inspiration and what made you decide that you wanted to participate?
When I first started doing art, I participated in a school competition, and I always wanted to participate and hire ranks and one day be in a museum. So this was an opportunity to get somewhere else.
And then the last question is a 10th grader. Does this mean we're gonna look forward to another submission next year?
Yes, ma'am.
So Peyton, if you will start right here and go around so that board members can shake your hand, and let's give her another round of applause.
Good job, keep it up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Keep it up. Congratulations, so proud of you. Oh, yes. Um, Peyton, let's get a picture.
Thank you.
Me too.
I know, I met Peyton's daddy the other day when I was walking up. And the dad says, "The principal and the superintendent walking her to the car." So we have to make sure that we take care of her. Okay? Yes?
Do you have it signed?
You have it signed. That's the one. That's the one. Yeah, yeah.
All right, look right here.
Beautiful.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Congratulations. That is nice. As you can see, we like a lot of recognition. We have to show the students that we really appreciate everything they're doing, staff and staff as well. Okay, now athletes.
Yes.
We know we got some mighty, mighty good programs here, so tonight we're gonna be recognizing our spring athletes.
Yes, good evening, Chair Lehman, Vice Chair Sims, school board members, Superintendent Dr. Karen Monica Davis, those in person and those watching online. We are super excited tonight. The team is glad to recognize some of our middle and high school athletes who have excelled during the season and have received conference recognition. Um, so we're going to, we have a robust list. All right. Warren County Board of Education appreciates your dedication to your sport and your remarkable performance throughout the season. You are proving yourself to be a top-tier competitor, and this honor reflects your hard work, passion, and commitment to excellence. So we're gonna call some names, um, this evening. Um, for our conference track and field championship meet for Warren County Middle School, we have girls discus, Soraya Hargrove, third place. Okay, Ricky Bates, um, boys long jump, second place.
Congratulations, honey.
Boys 100 meters, um, Arroy Williams. Boys 400 meter, Kelly Balling, Samaja Hargrove, Lenaya Seawatt, and Zara Hardwood again, second place.
I love that relay team.
Boys 400 meter, Zion Belcher, second place.
All right, Zion.
All right, also boys 400 meters, Mr. Williams, third place.
He skipped one. He skipped one, Ms. Ballard. That's what's screwing him up.
Boys 400 by 100 meter, Zion Belcher, Zion Belcher, Ricky Bates, and Isaiah Thorne, first place. Also boys 400 by 200 meter, Ricky Bates, Derek Austin Jr., Rahim Thornton, and Isaiah Thorne, second place. Boys 800 meters, Trevor Owens, first place. Boys 200 meter, Derek Austin Jr., second place.
Come on, honey, boy. Congratulations, honey.
Lenaya Seawatt.
Let's go for our national track and field.
Congratulations, start right here. Start right here, shake hands, honey. Shake hands, everybody. Congratulations, very proud of you. Congratulations, very proud of you. Congratulations, very proud of you. Proud of you.
Next, our Warren County Middle School softball team and baseball team, ninth second place conference champs. And so we're gonna start with the softball team. And we're gonna go through, we're gonna call the names. If you're here, just come on up and they will give you your certificates. Savary Henderson, Jamal Dutch, Zara Lynch, Sarah Howard, Sarah Bryant, Denaya Richardson, Envy Williams, Tyler Williams, Charlie Vermont, Mark Bacon, Candy Science, Will Mall, and head coach St. Christian Henderson. And assistant coach Terrance Cooper. Baseball?
Baseball.
Also, Miss Shawna Miles, come on up, Miss Miles, we'll have her, guys.
Right, Miss Miles. Good to see you.
We don't have the, um, energy start tomorrow when it's raining, outs- heavy outside, so.
Understood. Okay, go right there and start shaking. Thank y'all. Love you. Good to see you. You doing good? Get up and hug you.
Next, with Diah Bate Middle School baseball team. Jana Pay, Christopher Howard, Kaden Redd, Ahmad Evans, Derek Pease, Andre Black, Amari Richardson, Ari Williams, Derek Austin Turner, Iris Henderson, Ethan Davis, Ricky Bates. Head coach Marquise Jones, assistant coach Terrance Cooper.
Congratulations. His feet won't take ease. All right. Congratulations. Congratulations, very proud of you. That's your mom. That's the high school that you finished. Congratulations. Thank you, sir. All you do, we appreciate you. Congratulations. Congratulations, Coach. Yeah, you already know, Coach. Thank y'all for coming.
Moving on to Warren County High School. Uh, where Warren County High School, uh, the baseball team was all conference. As well as the baseball coach was Coach O'Leary. So the baseball all conference, Asta Sauer. Chantette Alcock, Zara Hyman, Javion Moreling, Zara Fleming. Martin Harris.
All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all in football training? Where the coach?
Coach. Coach O'Leary.
It's the rest of the team. All of y'all. Congratulations. Good job.
Huddle up.
Oh, wait, let me get my picture. Um, we're gonna get you a certificate, the rest of the team. We'll get them later. She's in the picture.
I mean, that's my next up. I still can't get everybody, so we gotta. That's much better, I gotcha.
Look at George, he's all there.
Can you take it out for me, sorry?
My nephew's hair look like that all the time. I had to, I know it's home. Y'all working, boys, that's all right.
Awesome, will they have stuff that way? There you go. Now I can see everybody. Smile. Gotcha.
Congratulations. Congratulations, very proud of y'all. Very proud of you. Congratulations. Good seeing you. Congratulations, I love your hair. Congratulations, we appreciate you. Absolutely. Good job. Absolutely.
Well, our Warren County High School softball all conference players. Kevin Shites, Mr. Conference Player of the Year. Mahala Harris, Kamara Riot, Tiana Richardson, and Samara Redstone. And also, the coach of the year, Heidi Mouse.
The rest of your team out there?
Yes.
Y'all, honey, your team. Okay, that's all right. Congratulations to y'all. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Got it?
Okay. Excellent. Congratulations, honey, very proud of you.
And while they're shaking hands, we have track all conference players. Rhode County High School.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
For the girls, track all conference, Emma Smith, Desmond Freeman, Alana Berger, Jamal Jackson, Sparker Alexander,
Come on, girl.
Bartrice Medina, and Ashala Jones, and Samara Williams.
Alright.
And for the boys, we have Jonathan Andrews,
Alright.
Taker Douglas,
Good job, Andrews.
Amara Richardson, Tony Henderson, Ken Sean Austin, Amara Gobler, Brian King, Amara Watson, Amanda Perkins, Julia Althaus, and Karen Guns, and Coach of the Year, Martin Jones. And the ass of the track, Miss Mary Thomas.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Hey, Coach of the Year.
I'm telling you, wow.
Coach of the Year.
He was one of my teachers. Alright, alright. I'm telling you.
Alright, we gotta act like we like each other.
And she Martin Jones was Coach of the Year for the girls' track and ball.
So, if you take a step forward, it'll allow you to take a step that way. You can take a step forward. Yep, you can take a step forward. Actually, I'm gonna have you choose some steps. There you go. So that allows you to scooch it in some. Uh, that's better, I can get it now. Look right here. Got it?
Okay.
Right there.
Right here, start here and shake your hand.
No, you gotta come around. Congratulations. Congratulations, proud of y'all. Very proud of y'all. Congratulations, very proud of you. Andrews, you rock, sir. Congratulations, very proud of you. Wow, good to see you, sir.
I'm blessed to be with you.
Also, our Rhode County Middle School, we're saying these trophies. Rhode County Middle School Athletic Association, regular season runner-up 2025.
Wow.
For baseball.
Wow.
Softball and baseball.
Okay, both coaches, bring your kids back on. We'll get a picture anyway.
It's Coach Clark, after the hall. Coach Clark. Okay, alright.
We're gonna do this a little better next time. Alright.
Great. This is great.
We can't change the Stanley Cup. Alright. Smile. Right here. Got it.
Excellent. So proud of y'all, thank y'all. Thank you so much. Great things happen in Rhode County. Is this my seat? Wow.
Usually, we don't have a long program like that, but you know, school's getting ready to get out in a couple of weeks.
That's right.
And we wanted to make sure that we recognize the students before they leave. Because it's important for them to feel that we appreciate what they do, because to be a student athlete is a hard thing. Because you're just in the classroom, working, you're keeping your grades up to be able to participate. But the thing that we have to really clap is the coaches who give up their time. Their role models for our students. And then we have two dynamite, um, A.D.s. Victor Hunt Jr. at the high school, who's the athletic director there. And Maurice Crunk, who's the athletic director for middle school. And so they carry those sports. So it was great to see this coming in tonight, so... We organized a little bit better than next time, but it was good, thank you. Thank you so much. Alright, moving on.
Okay. I would just like to say one thing.
Y'all need to go tell the story.
That's it.
Rhode County doing some good things.
That's exactly right.
Tell the story, when you hear something else, be our, um, mouthpiece out there. Be our mouthpiece of the things that we're doing so well.
So well, I agree.
Well, and I think what just transpired is a great example of, I know what this board thinks, and that is the importance of academics as well as the arts and athletics. The three A's. And I think we're all committed to supporting that as we move forward with our new leadership. No pressure, arts.
Everything came together. Everything came together with our partnerships coming in, then our recognizing of our students with the art. And then we came around with the athletics. So just, everything is just blending right together in the things that we are pushing for here within our system. Moving on.
Alright, um, public comments, we have done. So, our first discussion item is the 2026 local application for CTE with Mr. Fogg.
Is he you?
There's a red inside. That's alright. That means you had a good crowd, that's alright.
You in the overflow room?
Wait patiently. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I come tonight before you to get the local application approved. This is a year two of a two-year plan that was approved last year, so tonight we'll just be hitting the highlights of the changes of what we have to have approved for the second year. We will take a look at the eight data points of the plan. They're listed for you, and I'm gonna break some of them down on the next slide. So for this particular slide, we're gonna discuss some rooms for improvement. When you're looking at the slide, what's in red means there's an opportunity for growth. We did not meet meaningful progress, and meaningful progress in the eyes of the state is within 90% of your benchmark. So being within 90%, we have two dashes. With that dash, that dash tells us that there is a gap of less than 5%. So they note that with a gap, with a dash. So that's what you will see under 2S1 and 2S2. Under 3S1, post-secondary placement, we have some room to grow there. Some strategies that we're gonna use to grow the three indicators. We're gonna look at integrating literacy and comprehension skills into CTE courses and to support the teachers with ongoing training and data-driven POCs. We'll be doing some cross-curricular projects with field trips, especially those between CTE and math that will reinforce mathematical skills. Summary enrichment opportunities will also be expanded, and we will implement tailored interventions to enhance career readiness, leveraging partnerships with NC Works and Carthage Workforce Development for post-secondary training opportunities. So this is an approval piece, this is what we're looking at for this year. Is our funding for 25-26 school year. For PRC O-13, which is considered to be the month of employment that we use, we have 117 for this upcoming school year. That was allotted to us by the state. Previous year, we had 123, so we lost six months of employment. PRC O-14, which is state support, we have $33,967 for this upcoming school year. And we were given last year $36,207, which means we lost $2,240. And for PRC 17, which is a federal grant, we are estimating, because we have not received allowances based off of the guidance of DPI, we've been told to calculate at least 95% of the previous budget. So this year, we're anticipating $54,000, but we were giving last year $56,852 with a difference of $2,852. So that's anticipated, but we're hoping for the best. And these funds will be used to assist, um, our teachers with supplies, materials, equipment, staff development, credentials, and curriculum development. Are there any questions?
Mr. Fogg, can you, um, please tell them, um, what a CTE completer is for the people who are...
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, when she talks about completers, if you're looking at this particular slide, this, this particular slide measures our CTE concentrators. So concentrators and completers equals our students that have completed Level 1 and Level 2 of a course successfully. So that would be like Foods 1 and Foods 2 successfully completion.
Can you back up one more?
Sure.
What is CTE?
Say that one more time.
What is CTE?
Oh, thank you. Career and technical education, CT is career and technical education.
So those are your courses like Foods...
Foods 1, Foods 2, Masonry. We have Carpentry on Vance Grammar's campus, we have Adobe Visual and Adobe Video, we have Microsoft Word, PowerPoint. We also have Cyber Security, Project Leathaway. So, yeah, we have an assortment.
That's all for a lot, that's right.
We do, we have an assortment for the students to go through.
Sounds good.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can go back to the overflow room.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we'll have a discussion about the 2025 to 2028 local academically or intellectually gifted AIG plan, presented by Ms. Desair.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, and audience. So I'm here to present, um, the, the plan, the local AIG plan. So just for information, the local AIG plan is reviewed, revised, and must be approved by the board every three years. I just wanna make sure I mention the AIG team. Um, we have worked hard this year to make sure, you know, we complete the plan and make it happen. Myself and the, um, AIG specialist for the elementary school, Ms. Stephanie Seaworth, who's here in the audience, and Ms. Megan Watson-Williams, the AIG specialist for the secondary, um, for the secondary schools. We met weekly or bimonthly. We also, um, we were also joined by Mr. Jones, Ms. Stephanie Brooks, and Dr. Amy Richardson during our monthly or quarterly meeting. And, um, we have, um, used, um, information or input from parent and teacher through parent surveys, through individual meetings, staff meetings, and conferences. Okay? So one of our highest priorities in revising the plan is the referral screening and identification procedure. And a lot of the questions, um, from the last AIG plan was about this. And we make sure that our new plan for the 2025-2028 is streamlined and have, um, a clear process for referral screening and identification. So the, the chart that you see on, on there right now, it, it basically compares the current and the new, the current and the proposed new plan for the 25-28. So for the referral process, our current plan, um, for the current plan, the referral for kindergarten to third grade basically is a referral for the nurture grouping. So the nurture grouping, they are not identified as AIG, but we provide them with experiences and activities to make sure that they are ready for that identification in the fourth grade, where, you know, we start identifying students in the AIG program. We wanted to make sure that we broaden our, um, referral procedure. Um, for, for our 25-28, um, program, um, plan, we wanted to make sure that referral for AIG begins in kindergarten to 12th grade, okay? And, because if they are AIG, they are AIG. However, we will still continue with our nurture group in a way that if they don't, if any students referred in the AIG program don't meet the criteria, and they're almost there, we can still put them in the nurture program so that we're pushing them and giving them those opportunities, so that if we re-screen them, they will have that opportunity to be in the program. Okay? Make sense?
Yeah.
Okay? And also, another, um, thing that we made sure we add in the new plan is to make sure that we are, our referral screening and identification process is equitable. Okay? Currently, our, uh, black population is underrepresented. Only, um, um, less than 5% of our black population is identified as AIG compared to other, um, subgroups. Okay? We wanna make sure that everything is equitable, so we, we added another layer on the referral process. Used to be teachers, parents, you know, community members, high school students can self-refer. But what do we do with those students who may have the potential, but you know, are not referred? So we added another layer wherein the AIG team will review the EOG, EOC diagnostic tests and classroom observations to make sure that we're not missing anybody. Okay? As far as the screening, so after the referral, we move on to the screening. Students that meet, um, students that meet the criteria for the referral, it has to be two quantitative and two qualitative criteria. Um, if they meet it after they're referred, then we move on to the screening procedure, right? How do I click this, Russ? The, the link. That K-12 AIG referral. And this will be very quick, I just wanna make sure that everybody can see that, um, what those criterias are. Can you make it a little bit bigger? If you scroll on the next page. Okay? So after, after the, after the referral, the AIG specialist would look at, you know, two qualitative but two quantitative data, and they have to meet those. Qualitative data includes teacher observation and narratives, work samples, nurture group data, and motivational checklist, um, if applicable. They have to also meet two quantitative data, which is above-level performance in two consecutive diagnostic assessments, assessments like I read in M-class, Level 4 or 5 on the BOG, EOC, EOC score, report card grades of no lower than B, and standardized aptitude and achievement test scores if available. Again, students that are referred that meet two qualitative and two quantitative criteria would move on to the screening process. Okay? So, the previews, well, the current, um, plan that we have, it says that, you know, K-12 meets four of the criteria will be screened. We wanna make sure that we are specifying what those criterias are for our new plan. And also, we have added another layer, going back to that equitable identification. We will be using, we will be universally screening second and fifth grade students, um, once we implement the plan. So what that means, universal screen, what that means is that everybody in the fifth and the second grade will be screened, okay? Alright, identification, so once, once, um, the AIG specialist, um, screen students, then we will move on to the identification. The difference is that, again, in our current plan, we only identify beginning 4th to 12th grade. And now with our new plan, we will begin identifying from kindergarten to 12th, okay? Okay? Again, if they're AIG, they're AIG, and also that would help us because, you know, we get our funding through our AIG identified students. Okay? And so, okay, and I did say that if a student does not, is almost there but does not meet the criteria, they will be placed in the nurture group, so we will give them those opportunities to develop their skills and their talents. Okay?
Sounds good.
This one? It's not working. Oh, yeah. Sorry. All right. And then, of course, these are our five identification pathways. Pathway one, A and one B, would be gifted in reading or math. Pathway two, gifted in both reading and math. Pathway three, academically and intellectually gifted for both reading and math. So for those three pathways, they have, students have to meet an aptitude or achievement score of equal to or more than ninetieth percentile. Okay? For pathway, in addition to other, to those other quantitative and qualitative criteria. Okay? For pathway four, for intellectually gifted, I'm sorry, pathway three, since it, I'm sorry, let me go back. Pathway one and two has, they both have to meet the ninetieth percentile for aptitude or achievement, and achievement. For pathway three, since we're talking about intellectually gifted, the aptitude test has to be equal to or higher than ninety-five percentile. And pathway four would be, since we're only looking, we're not looking at academically, and I think it could be any type of talent, but, you know, we're looking at the cognitive or intellectual, we're looking at a score of ninety-eighth percentile. Okay? Pathway five is for transfer students because we do get students that have differentiated education plan from other districts, and so, you know, we have to make sure that we are servicing those, and we're looking at their eligibility criteria when they get to us. Okay? Other changes in the AIG plan, we needed to make sure that we have clear K to twelve service models. We increased pushing and push-in support and talent development. Talent development is our nurture program. We make sure that SEL or social emotional learning is integrated in the DEPs, and that would, you know, include collaboration with student services, making sure that we are providing those to our AIG identified students as well. We added, for staff and professional development, we are making sure that, for this plan, we're making sure that there's collaboration with HR as far as AIG licensure, and add-on license for specialists and regular ed teachers. So we will be looking for pathways to add those to our regular ed teachers as well. Okay? And targeted PDs aligned to gifted practices, and I will identify those on the last slide. Also, we made sure that we address family and community engagement. We need to strengthen our partnership with parents, and so we made sure that we added the parent advisor committee in our plan, and transparent communication. We're working on our website. We'll be sending out newsletters, and we will do an annual surveys for, you know, and also for stronger monitoring and program evaluation, we'll make sure that we are looking at data. We're meeting together as a team to look at data and to make sure that we are looking at the impact of our AIG program, you know, with our students and the students that we service. Okay? This is our yearly timeline. Okay? Again, year-round, we will have enrichment, push-in-pull-out support, teacher consultation support, family engagement, referral, screening, and identification. And we just want to make sure that, you know, we break down what we're doing every month. Okay? And so, service options, I'm not going to read word for word, but on the, in our plan, we made sure that we break down the services per grade level. Okay? These are options. Not all of this will be in the DEPs for each student because we have to look at each individual student. Okay? But I do know that we're trying to push, a lot of push-in because we don't want to pull them out when, you know, when the instruction happens in the classroom. But again, this, it's an individualized plan. We did add a lot of enrichment opportunities, and I got to say, based on funding, you know, we want to do a lot, but, you know, we have to make sure that we have the money for it, but we made sure that we added this in our plan so that, you know, we have options. So we have enrichment opportunities for elementary. I do like the service learning projects, you know, it helps the students look at community problems and, you know, you know, come up with ways in solving them, you know, and field trips. Secondary, I do like the volunteer and service programs and internships. We really got to expose our students to these enrichment opportunities. So these are just some professional development topics that we have included in our plan that we believe are truly important in making sure that our AIG program is impactful. And differentiation is one of them, and I think the district is big on differentiation as well. Instructional support, these are the things that our, that our AIG specialist will be providing to our regular ed teachers. So push-in coaching, one-on-one consultation, team collaboration, and they will provide access to enrichment resources and conferences. PLCs and collaborative meetings, again, this is where that monitoring comes in. We need to make sure that we're looking at data, we're meeting and collaborating with, you know, every other department in our district. Okay? Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
There's a question here. They're asking about DEPs.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
DEPs, differentiated education plan.
Thank you for that. So my question was, once a student has been screened and is determined eligible for the service, how long do you stay in that? Is it every two years? Is it the grades? How does one, especially if you're going to identify so early? Then, are you in AIG the whole time you're in school? Just help me understand how that works.
Yes. So once you're identified, we do, we conduct like annual progress review, and then from there, you know, we determine if the child will stay in the AIG program or not.
Remain in it.
And I'm pointing over there because my AIG specialist is over there, and she's, you know...
I think it's a great, you know, represent what your questions. I think it's a great question, and I also think it's good that you guys are starting them out from kindergarten throughout. So what I, the buzzword through my lens is nurturing, that you're going to nurture them through the process, which if they're deviating from that plan, you nurture them so they can continue to progress and move forward. I really like that process, whereas we did it a little different years back, I think.
Exactly. And that can happen, go ahead.
And that will work the same way. You can nurture them to become an AIG student.
Exactly.
So they will get the support whether they're in the program or not, you know.
Yeah. And I appreciate the fact that you are, you know, looking at the less minority, or you said the African-Americans were not, you know, fluent in going into AIG. So if you're looking at that, I think your criterion kind of, you know...
It broadens that, making sure that we're...
Which is great.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that, too. I like the equity piece.
Yes, ma'am. We're big on that.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
Great job.
All right. Thank you.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
All right. Next on our agenda is the summer feeding program. Ms. Melina, Melina, right, sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, the superintendent, chiefs, and my colleagues and members of the community. This evening, I have three items on the agenda to present to you. On the first item tonight, we have summer feeding program for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. School nutrition will be serving breakfast and lunch to the children within our community aged between one and eighteen during the summer months. Currently, we have eleven camps that are within our community that have signed up with us to receive meals. We have the Boys and Girls Club, Chapel Hill Baptist Church, Jones Chapel Christian Church, Living and Learning Youth Center, the CTE Department's National Summer Transportation Institute, the Warren County Memorial Library, Youth Farm Camp, this is a new camp, this is the first time they'll be working with us, Read to Achieve, which will be at Marion Boyd, the Credit Recovery Program at the Warren County High School, the Freshman Academy at the Early College, and our non-congregate site for this year will be at Northside Elementary School. So we are expecting to serve a total of about three hundred and fifty children in the community this summer. School nutrition will also deliver to the sites within the proximity of the central office using our truck. All the sites within the district schools are congregate sites, which basically means that children aged one to eighteen are welcome to come and eat within the school cafeteria. And for the families that wish to take food home, we will serve meals in bulk at our non-congregate site at Northside Mondays through Thursday. So on Thursday's, families will be able to receive meals for that day, which is Thursday. So they'll get Thursday lunch, Friday breakfast and lunch, and Monday breakfast as well. And along with that, we will send them with heating and serving instructions, storage instructions, as well as discard instructions. And that is all for summer feeding. Do you have any questions regarding summer feeding?
Yeah, one question, if I could, Madam Chair. You said you had eleven camps.
Correct.
That's going to be open.
Correct.
Do you know what the previous camps were last year?
Last year, we had a lot. We had probably, I want to say, sixteen camps.
Do you know why we have a decrease in camps?
Because we had a lot of non-congregate sites. So, but we didn't have a lot of participation in that. So this year, I've only chosen to have one non-congregate site, which is pretty central, and that's at Northside. So anybody who wants to pick up meals and take them home, they can do that at Northside versus at all schools.
Okay. I like the fact that you're doing it at, you know, like one school, but what about the other side of the county, like Vaughn area? How are you covering that area?
We tried to do that last year. We had no participation.
So they don't need, they don't need any food ever, do they?
I can't say that.
But, okay.
But we, we had a non-congregate site at Vaughn last year as well. We had very little participation. There are days where nobody would come at all to pick up meals.
So it's a waste, kind of. And one more question. As far as, I'm sure you're going to put this information about what you just shared on our website, so everybody will know where to come, right?
We have been advertising at the radio, newspaper, Facebook, Class Dojo.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Within the district.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
Any other site, questions?
No, I think Ebony...
Ask them all?
Yeah.
My second item on the agenda is the twenty-five, twenty-six school year bids. It's that time again where we submit bids for either renewal or send out new bids. So for the next school year, we submitted new bids for Lot One, which is food, Lot Three for supplies, Lot Four for fresh produce to our current distributor, Cisco Foods, Gordon Foods, and U.S. Foods. Gordon Foods and U.S. Foods declined, leaving us with Cisco Foods. The bottom line, including delivery, totaled to six hundred and eighty-two thousand three hundred fifty-two and seventy-nine cents for the next school year. And then we also submitted new bids for Lot Six, which is beverages, to our current distributor, Pepsi, Cisco Foods, and Coca-Cola. Cisco Foods gave us the highest one, and then followed by Coca-Cola. So again, Pepsi was the lowest bidder. School nutrition recommends to continue with Cisco Foods and Pepsi for our food and beverage needs for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And that is all. Any questions about the bids?
All right. I think you've answered all questions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Next is the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six bid for Pepsi Bottling Ventures. Oh, you just did that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't cross it off. I'm sorry. I just was realizing that as I was reading it. Okay. So now the twenty-twenty-five, twenty...
Action items.
It's action items. Geez, I need to work, not a problem. All right. So now we'll do this just straightforwardly. Time to vote. I'd like to entertain a motion to consider approval of the twenty-twenty-six local application for CTE.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we consider the approval for the twenty-twenty-six local application for CTE.
Second? Okay. I have a motion by Board Member Tally Brain and a second by Vice Chair Sims that we approve the twenty-twenty-six local application for CTE. Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote, as well as with the voting sound of aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion carries. Second action item is I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Pepsi Bottling Ventures bid.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Pepsi Bottling Ventures bid.
Second? So I have a motion by Board Member Long and a second by Board Member Bird that we approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Pepsi Bottling Ventures bid. If there's no further discussion, may we vote, as well as with the voting sound of aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion carries. Next action item is to, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Cisco Foods bid.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Cisco Foods bid.
Second. Second.
Motion by Board Member Vice Chair Sims and a second by Board Member Tally Brain. I lost my place, that we approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Cisco Foods bid. If there's no further discussion, may we vote, as well as the voting, with the voting sound of aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion carries. Okay. Our last action item, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the AIG education plan.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the AIG education plan.
Second? I have a motion by Board Member Long and a second by Board Member Bird that we approve the AIG education plan. Does that, and you have a year on it?
Okay. What is it? It's three years?
Twenty-five to twenty-eight.
It's three years.
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-five. Put that in there. Sorry about that.
Twenty-five to twenty-eight. I'll try that again. A motion to approve the AIG education plan, twenty-twenty-five to twenty-eight.
Yeah.
I have a motion by Board Member Long, a second by Board Member Bird. If there's no further discussion, may we vote, as well as with the voting sound of aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion carries. Okay. So I'd like to entertain a motion to convene and to close session.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the board convene and to close session to prevent disclosure of confidential information pursuant General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen one eleven A one, A five, A six, General Statute one fifteen C three nineteen, and to consult with the board attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant General Statutes one forty-three dash three eighteen one eleven A three.
A motion by Board Member Tally Brain and a second by Board Member Long that we convene and to close session for said recommendation. If there's no further discussion, may we vote, as well as with the voting sound of aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion carries. We'll convene in the closed session at seven thirty-five. We'll convene and to close session at 7:35.
Sorry.
Okay. We're now back in open session and I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Madam Chair, I make a motion for us to adjourn this meeting.
Second?
I have a motion by Board Member Talley Bream and a second by Vice Chair Simms that we adjourn this meeting. May we vote as well as with the voting sound of aye? Aye. Nay, that motion carries.